Your cell phones, please, and make sure they're turned off so we're not going to be interrupted. And we're going to be led in prayer and a pledge by Carol Norwood, who's on our board and representing District Seven.
Good evening. I'm saying, you know, I got that preacher stuff. Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you today for your presence, Lord. We thank you for your Holy Spirit in this place, Lord, as we worship you and we look for guidance, Lord. We ask that your will be done in central, Father God. We ask, Father God, that you lead and guide us into your truth, your way, and your desire for this school system and for this city, Father God. We bind anything that is unlike you off this city, Father God, and we lose everything that you have from the kingdom for this city, Father God, for our families, for prosperity, Father God, for safety, Father God, for everybody that is involved, Father God. We lose your blood, Father God, on this city, Lord. We give you glory and honor, and we will serve you the best we can in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tracy, would you handle the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Carmena?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Hooper?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
We have a call.
The first order of business is for the recognition.
I keep, my thing keeps turning off. recognition be led by Dr. Fountain.
So, we're very excited tonight to honor two of our students in our school system who have received straight A's from first grade through fifth grade. So, from the very time they started in the school system until they finished the fifth grade, and these two students are moving into Central Middle School. So, I know they're super excited about that. We have a number of students when they went through this list that are very close to achieving straight A's throughout that time. A number of students received one B here, there, wherever. But these students have maintained straight A's for five straight years. So, I would like to ask them to come up to the front. This is Maggie Lewandowski and Ms. Eliana Mansour. Come on up to the front. Now, I would like to give them each a certificate, which says a certificate of academic achievement. We're proud to present this certificate for maintaining straight A's first through fifth grade. And also, one of the things we started several years back was a culture coin. And what we love about these culture coins is that they're numbered. So, nobody in the world has a culture coin with these numbers, which is number 261 and 262. So, I'm going to present those to you as well. Congratulations. Now, Luke, we would also like to ask their parents to stand up because I am fairly certain that without their parents working on this, that this probably would not have happened. So, thank y'all for coming on. So, thank y'all very much. We're very proud of y'all. We're excited to have students just like you in the school system, and we're excited to see where you go over the next six years in Central. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. Your board is very, very proud of you. We look forward to watching you go all the way through to graduation. All right. Number six, we're going to consider approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, May the 8th, 2023, and take appropriate action. I will need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the audience? Board, any discussion or changes? With no objection, that motion carries. Number seven is to consider approval of the minutes from the strategic planning session held on Thursday, May the 11th, 2023, and take appropriate action. Thank you, Dr. Walker.
One second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, audience? Discussion, board? With no objection, that motion carries. Number eight is to receive the superintendent's report on personnel. Dr. Fountain?
So, board members, you can see the report. It's always busy in the summer with our retirements, our resignations, but also our hires. Also, we put on here contracts. So, any of our APs or other admin, they have a two-year contract. Typically, have everybody on the same cycle, but since we have some people who have kind of moved around, we have some new two-year contracts. So, I'll just mention Ms. Julie Stevens is moving from CIS to the Central Office. She's super excited about that, I know. We also have Ms. Erin Bonner Venture moving from Bellingrath to CIS. And then Ms. Dawn Trautman, who has been the AP at Tanglewood, and Ms. Brown is moving to be the principal at Bellingrath. And then Ms. Chris Dennis, who has been at Tanglewood, she's been the data specialist, is moving up to our AP level. So, that's our movements right there. But I just want to congratulate all of them. We're super excited for them.
Our next order of business is to receive a report from the Human Resources Policies Committee meeting held on Monday, May the 22nd, 2023, and take appropriate action. And I'll turn that part of the meeting over to Ms. Norwood.
Okay. The Human Resource Policy Committee met on Monday, May 22nd, 2023, and the report is as follows. Number one, the committee received the first reading on revised policy B-15 school board ethics. This is a report only and requires no action. Number two, the committee recommends approval of a new EL teacher position for grades six through 12 and a new paraprofessional position at Central Middle School. Madam President, I so move.
Because they were presented in committee, we do not need a second. But do we have any discussion from the audience? Board, any comments? With no objection, those motions carry.
Number three, the committee recommends approval of a revised job description for the technology data specialist position as presented by the staff. Madam President, I so move.
Discussion from the audience. Board, any comments? With no objection, that motion carries.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Norwood. Number 10, to receive a report from the Finance Committee meeting held on Monday, May 22nd, 2023, and take appropriate action regarding the following. Mr. Mike Hooper.
Well, as indicated, the Finance Committee met on Monday, May 22nd, 2023. It reports the following. The committee members received information on the property and workers' compensation renewal policy as presented by representatives from Cadence Insurance. The committee, after the committee meeting was held, the superintendent received an update regarding this policy renewal, and he is going to share this update with us now.
So, our brokers from Cadence, David Drake and then also Mr. Dennis Badreen, are here tonight to give final numbers for our property insurance and our workers' comp insurance renewals for '23-'24. We, at our last meeting, at our committee meeting, we had preliminary numbers, but we would like them to come back. They didn't have numbers at that point, final numbers, but they're going to come back and then offer this to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Fountain. David, would you help me? This is the numbers on our workers' comp program. David, are you handing out workers' comp of the property? Okay, but thank you. As previously, at the last meeting, also in some subsequent meetings with staff, we have marketed the workers' comp program to 16 insurance carriers. The bids ranged in premium from $132,873 to north of $240,000. We recommend that it stay with the current provider, which is Luba. The annual premium is $132,873. That is an increase from expiring premium. That is primarily due to two things. First off, the loss ratio over the last five years has not been favorable, and the experience mod, which is calculated by the National Council on Compensation Insurance, has increased from a .76 mod to a .97 mod. So, we recommend Luba at $132,873.
Could I add one thing real quick, and just to ask you, Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Would you just share with them, like I know when it shows the, you know, the experience mod going from .76 to .97, you could say, okay, well, what are we not doing or so forth? But I know Mr. O'Banion is very diligent about monitoring our workers' comp. And sometimes, when there are cases, we're just kind of...
Yes.
We just kind of have to roll with it. So, anyway, if you could just speak to that for a second, that'd be helpful.
So, first and foremost, we have to congratulate Jeremy for what he's done. He manages the claims in a fashion that is second to none. And the provider is located in Baton Rouge. So, Jeremy has actually been to their office to talk to the claims adjusters, and he has a very good, strong working relationship with them. So, he manages them well. There are some things that you cannot manage and are with, you know, they're not in his control. There are two unfortunate circumstances. One, that we spoke at committee meeting, where there was a cardiac event, and it is in litigation, and it is part of your loss history. So, you know, while loss history is not favorable and while the NCCI mod has increased, we take those instances out, that large one particularly, everything would be, you know, in pretty good order. We are thankful Luba has treated you very well. The services or the staff absolutely loves them, as does the insurance provider. So, there is a good, positive relationship. And based upon the numbers we got, we know that we are in the right place with this carrier.
According to this information, we're going to need to have a motion in a second before we can vote on this.
I move to accept the... Accept Luba.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Walker.
I'll settle that.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Any discussion from the audience on this? Any questions? Any questions from the board?
Yeah, and I should have asked it the other day, and I forgot. Let me ask you this. So, the hard issue that's in litigation now, what if it comes back in our favor? I mean, is that...
Well, it'll reflect in, you know, the future loss ratios and the future mod. Yeah. It's not a permanent score until it's settled.
Any other questions or comments, board? With no objection, that motion carries. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll go back to, go back to you.
So, Dennis is handing off the property summary?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, in front of you, you have the property summary, moving on from workers' compensation. We have our summary, starting with our breakout of the values. So, you have your building value contents. We have modular buildings, as well as some outdoor equipment, such as a football field and lights, et cetera, computer, and then income, our expense. What carriers are doing right now, so we've tried to meet early, often, and, you know, make sure everyone is prepped as far as where the market, you know, stands in general. It's very volatile, right? So, we have, you know, from 2012 to 2017, there was one, just nationally, one event that was over $10 billion in value. Since that time, in the last five years, we're now going on 10 events that have exceeded $10 billion with last year. Ian, for example, in Florida, that storm is projected to, you know, settle somewhere over excess of $100 billion of damage. So, what does this mean for us as Louisianians? It's ultimately, you know, at a national and global level, there's just the money that is invested, you know, into the insurance, what we call capacity, the limits that are available and dollars that are available to insure property is drying up, right? And the capacity that is available, it just unfortunately is costing a lot more. There's going to be change in terms, meaning deductibles, meaning limit structures, things along those lines. And that's something, again, we tried to meet throughout, you know, the past few months, to make sure that everyone's prepped, you know, in advance because, you know, there's no denying that there is really no good results right now. So, back to the summary, where it starts on the value. Carriers are looking at making sure, making sure that they are properly valuing the properties that they're insuring. So, now, especially, you know, since post-COVID, you have increase in a supply chain issues, increased cost of construction. So, making sure that buildings are properly valued. So, right off the bat, there's pretty much an 8% increase in our building value. Yet, it was mostly Central Middle, Central Intermediate. That was a little undervalued, so they bumped that up. And as far as the rate that they're able to deliver is right below there, which is a 32% increase, you know, compounded with that increase in the building cost. Below that, you'll see the summary of the limits that are actually applied. The policy, so this is one policy for all assets. The policy is capped $50 million for anyone lost, aside from the few, you know, sub-limited items that are below it. So, named storm, hurricane, for example, is capped at $25 million this year. Flood is five, which it was last year. Earthquake as well is five, and then outdoor property a million. So, really, the major change is, you know, limiting that $50 million cap on the policy total, and then $25 million for hurricane. Is there any questions there? Deductibles are, for the most part, staying the same, except for all other win, that's going to 1% deductible. But I know initially, whenever we started our renewal conversations, it was indicated that it would go from a 3% name storm deductible to five after, again, negotiations, some leveraging, you know, competition that was out there and tenure with our current program. They were, you know, agreeable to the 3%, so we're thankful. And on the back, we have a summary, too, of, you know, some other deductible options that are there. Just, we discussed with staff if we wanted to review that. But ultimately, we have, you know, premium change coming in at $726,785.56 compared to last year, we're at $496,723.73. So, a major, you know, jump there. Relative to the competition, because at the end of the day, we've sent your account to over 45 markets, whether that be, you know, in London, whether that be our public entity, you know, program that we have in-house. And the beauty of this, I guess, let's say, the one positive of this program that we're currently with is that it's one policy. Alternatives essentially is going to take, you know, we have an alternative bid here, that's $50,000 more, and it's going to be seven policies. So, when we talk about the capacity and availability in the marketplace, in order to try and get anywhere near to the coverage, you know, the limits that you need, it's going to take, you know, minimum of six to seven carriers in order to do so. So, we do have that one policy that's in place. You know, we have that lead, you know, if there is a claim, we have that lead claims adjuster. And then we have some alternative deductible options, too, that, you know, move to 5% or 10%, but after review and discussion internally, it just didn't seem like that premium credit made sense.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am, if there's any other questions.
Okay, well, we need to have a motion and a second, and then we'll ask our questions.
I move to approve of property insurance.
All right, thank you, Mr. ... All right, now, do we have any questions from the audience about any of these things that were discussed, presented? Board, questions?
Just, we, I was in the meetings and we discussed it, and it's just...
Your microphone, please.
I'm sorry. The, I was in the meetings, and we discussed it, and it's just, it's hard to realize how much it's going up for everyone across the board. And, you know, I worry about, are they going to price themselves, play me out? And then what will we do at that point? But, you know, we're going up 50% more than we paid last year. So, it's just hard to swallow. It's just a lot of money we're having to put down. And the one thing we did have going for it was the number of claims that we have, we've had in our life has been zero.
Correct.
Did you enjoy the discussion?
I would just reiterate that seeing the premium go up and the coverage go down was hard to swallow. But after doing a lot of looking at it, it is the world that we live within and the market that we have. We do have the capacity. But we were at $150,000 full coverage, we're probably over, I'm sure. This still gives us a good bit of adequate coverage. It's just hard to see the premium go up.
Correct. And we talked through, you know, additional limits, lowering limits, and found that this is just probably the best spot to land at.
I agree, a lot of work we're trying to find the best...
We appreciate y'all.
Any further questions? With no objection, that motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all.
Your efforts. All right, continue.
The Finance Committee received information on the general liability insurance renewal policy as presented by representatives from Gallagher Insurance. After the committee meeting was held, the superintendent received an update regarding this policy renewal, and he is going to share this update with us now.
Okay, so our friends from Gallagher can come on up to the gauntlet next. Butler and Adam, and they're here tonight to give final numbers for our general liability insurance renewal for the '23-'24 year. And they also were here at our last committee meeting to give an update, but they didn't have final numbers at that point yet.
Thank you, members of the board. Oh. Oh, okay, there. Thank you very much. In our initial meeting, when we had a discussion about the liability, we had indicated that Liberty Mutual was going to be about a 25% increase. And if you can see by the comparison, we're showing last year's limits of liability in the middle column, and then the renewal coverages in the right column. You'll notice that down at the, at the end of the day, the coverages have remained the same as they were last year. But we did have the premium increase, and we're indicating by line what that increase is. But overall, it's 24.51%, right at the 25. In our meeting, we discussed some of the issues as to why we had an increase. We had a few claims, you know, on the liability policy. And as a result, we were able to come within the same percentage that we had indicated at the meeting.
All right, board, we'll need a motion in a second before we can discuss. Thank you. Any discussion from the audience or any questions that you may have? Board, any questions or discussion? With no objection, that motion carries. Thank you all. Continue.
Finance Committee recommends approval of revised general fund budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year as presented by staff. Madam President, I so move.
Discussion from the audience. Board, any discussion? With no objection, that motion carries.
Finance Committee recommends approval of the original general fund budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year as presented by staff. Madam President, I so move.
Questions from the audience. Board? With no objection, that motion carries.
Committee recommends approval to award the bids for products that will be utilized by the child nutrition program for the 2023-2024 school year. Madam President, I so move.
Questions from the audience. Board? With no objection, that motion carries.
The committee recommends approval to grant the staff permission to renew the student accident insurance for the 2023-2024 school year as presented by staff. Madam President, I so move.
Questions from the audience. Board? With no objection, that motion carries.
Finance Committee recommends approval of the funding for a new EL teacher position for grades six through 12 and a new paraprofessional position at Central Middle School. Madam President, I so move.
Questions or discussion from the audience? Board? With no objection, that motion carries.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. The next report is to receive a report from the Curriculum Instruction Accountability Student Services Committee. Nick Carmena.
Curriculum Instruction Accountability Student Services Committee met on Monday, May 22nd, 2023, and reports the following. The committee recommends approval of changes to the discipline procedures in the student handbook by adding a procedure on criminal activity by students which occurs outside of school jurisdiction. Madam President, I so move.
Questions from the audience? Board, any comments, questions? With no objection, that motion carries.
Number two, committee members discussed reverting back to the original dress code on skirts and scorts for Central Middle and Central High School students. And we also discussed the length of students' hair. Mr. Fountain has some updates regarding these discussions that he'd like to share with us now.
So, Mr. Chair, we had, of course, a very lengthy discussion around dress code at our May 22nd committee meeting. I sent out some clarifying information to parents last Friday. In the correspondence to parents, we offered the opportunity to comment for them by sending an email to an email address, which I would receive. So, I did receive three questions around the hair length requirement, which I explained, and then one email from a student. Those were the only comments that I received. So, to clarify, I shared with parents that a few changes have already been approved by the board for next year. So, just to reiterate those, in our, in our, in our middle and our elementary schools, sweatshirts may not have hoods. So, elementary and middle school sweatshirts may not have hoods. Jackets will remain the same as last year. This means that jackets, those are with a zipper, may still have hoods, but the hoods cannot be worn in the building. So, that was to clarify, because there was some confusion on that. Also, the board had already approved that crocs have been added to the list of shoes that are not accepted. So, in addition to those pieces, which have already been approved by the board, I'm making the following recommendations to the school board for approval tonight. For Central Middle School and Central High School, hair must not be longer than two inches above the knee. If hair is longer than two inches above the knee, it must be pinned up. This was, we talked about this at length. pinned up. This was, we talked about this at length at our committee meeting. Number two, skirts and scorts may be worn by females in all grades. Skirts and scorts must be no higher than two inches above the knee. That was another item that we discussed in detail. And number three, shorts for both males and females must be no higher than two inches above the knee. So those are the three kind of clarifying pieces on the length. We're trying to simplify it by making them all the same. So I would ask the board to approve these three recommended changes to the students' dress code policy for the 23-24 school year.
With that, we're going to need a motion and a second from the board.
I make a motion to approve those three areas.
I'll second it.
Discussion from the audience. Any comments? Comments from the board? With no objection, that motion carries. Two, one, two, oh, I was off. With no objection, that motion carries. All right, number twelve, to receive a report from the Facilities Equipment Committee meeting held on Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and take appropriate action regarding the following. Dr. Walker.
All the committees met the same day. We were at the end, so everybody was kind of listening, so it was real quick. The committee had a discussion on use of central community school systems, facilities, as emergency shelters as needed. This is a report only, requires no action. Madam President, that concludes.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Number thirteen, to consider the staff's recommendation to award bids for lawn care services and take appropriate action. Dr. Fountain.
So, Madam President, we recently put out an RFP, which is a request for proposals for our lawn care service. We opened the RFPs on June the first, and we received proposals from five vendors. The RFP process allows us to review the qualifications of the vendor, their price, and the other items that may help us make the best decision for the school system. After reviewing the RFPs, we would like to recommend that RCI, which is Rotolo Consultants, be awarded the lawn care services contract for all of our schools. The contract is for three years. RCI currently does all of our athletic fields, and they've done an excellent job with that. So we are excited to have them maintain all of our school facilities.
I will need a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
All right.
They do a great job.
Yep. Any discussion? Any discussion, board? Comments? With no objection, that motion carries. Number fourteen is to adopt a resolution giving the superintendent the authority to execute the unclaimed property form with the Louisiana Department of Treasury Unclaimed Property Division, and all matters pertaining to funds or securities for the central community school system, and take appropriate action. Dr. Fountain.
So, Madam President, this is kind of an odd, I guess, request, but a member of our community contacted us, informed us that we have fifty dollars in unclaimed property through the, through the, through the treasury. So we reached out, and in order for us to claim this money, the board must adopt a resolution to authorize me, from our school system, to execute an unclaimed property form. I asked them, could we just get the board president to sign? But no, we have to do it this way. So for us to claim this fifty dollars back, we have to do a resolution, and then Tracy will take it from there after we do all this, in terms of turning it in and so allowing me to.
We can put it toward the insurance. Okay. All right, we will need a motion and a second, and then we'll have to have a roll call vote, because this is a resolution. Thank you, Mr. Hoover.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. Any comments from the audience? Tracy, you want me to roll my vote?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Coramina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
All present in favor.
All right. Number fifteen, to consider selection of the official journal for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Dr. Fountain.
So, Madam President, we must, every year, select an official journal by law. It's always been the Advocate. There are certain requirements that you have to meet. They're the only paper in the region that does meet that. So we're, so I'm asking the board to allow us to use the Advocate as the official journal for the 23-24 fiscal year.
Motion and a second, please.
I make a motion to use the Advocate as our official journal for this.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Coramina. Discussion from the audience. Board? With no objection, that motion carries. Number sixteen is the superintendent's report. Dr. Fountain.
So a couple of updates, and board, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about these items. But a couple of things for the end of the year. We had a wonderful ending of the school year. Of course, we had a great graduation, was a huge success. Our schools held, you know, various ceremonies, awards days. They also created many great end-of-year activities for our students. So really had a great, very solid end of the school. We also ended the year with another very successful crawfish boil for our teachers and staff. This event is one of the events that truly sets our school system apart from others. Lots of good food, plenty of laughs, and just a general festive atmosphere as we wrapped up our sixteenth school year as a system. Hard to believe the year is over, and we're moving into summer. The summer is very busy, and it's an active time on our school campuses. People ask me sometimes, oh, y'all about to settle in for summer. But it's very busy right now on our campuses. Summer school, which is credit recovery, started on June fifth for our middle school and our high school students. We're also doing some attendance recovery at this time. Tanglewood and CIS are partnering with BREC again to host a full-day summer camp for some academic remediation for our students. I understand that it's going very smoothly with the transportation, with BREC, everything. Last year, we started off a little rocky, but we've really had a good start this year. Is that true? Okay, good. Ballarat and Tanglewood will hold enrichment camps this month as well. Those will be upcoming. And then, of course, there are mini athletic camps all summer. If your child wants to participate in an athletic camp, the high school has one for just about every sport. Teachers will also be engaging in some professional development throughout the summer. Each subject-level group of teachers will plan together during the summer to prepare for the upcoming year. So for instance, our, you know, sixth-grade ELA teachers will meet over the summer to do some planning to make sure they're ready for the start of the year. All of our subject-level groups do that for our teachers. Our K through two teachers will be involved in training for their new ELA curriculum, CKLA. They're very excited about that. Our teachers at Central Intermediate School will also be going through the Capturing Kids' Hearts training. I'm excited that this culture building curriculum and processes will be utilized by the, by CIS, by the middle school and the high school. So almost all of our campuses will be involved with this, and we're very excited about that program. Think it's great for our kids. And there will also be trainings for teachers for their different and various curriculums. For some of our, I think, middle school math has some training, some of our science curriculum, social studies. We're actually going to partner with Zachary and with West Baton Rouge to do some training this summer for the new social studies curriculum. So we're trying to build some bridges between the districts with that. I'm also excited to mention our spring football documentary that will begin airing next Monday night at the end of the WAFB six o'clock news. This four-part series will chronicle our new coaching staff, the work our students put into spring practice, and will culminate with the spring game. I've seen the first two episodes of the documentary, and it's really good. Once each episode airs on WAFB, we will put it on our YouTube channel the following day. So episode one will air on the WAFB six o'clock news next Monday, June the nineteenth, and then we will release the episode the following day. I think this documentary is going to really have the community excited, sort of as we go through the summer, and we ramp up to August and September and the start of the football season. And finally, our June committee meetings will be held on Monday, June twenty-sixth at five fifteen. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Fountain. The only other announcement that I know of is on July the tenth, we will have our next school board meeting. It'll be in here at six o'clock. And that is it for the, just at the meeting. But number eighteen, we're going to enter into executive session to conduct the superintendent's yearly evaluation. But in order for us to go into executive session, I need a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
I move we go into executive session for the purpose of the student hand's evaluation.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion or comments from the audience? Or any questions? Tracy, continue. It's in the roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Coramina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
All present in favor.
Okay, we will come back after a long time.